I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the July 1st County Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are under the end of the counter next to Commissioner Kelly in the black folder. And if you need a listening device, we have Robert Normally in the front row to help you with a listening device, and he'll be probably back in a few minutes. Okay?
Routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda. Are there any comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of June 24th, 2014, and the joint minutes of June 24th, 2014.
Move the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from both meetings, the county commission meeting and the joint meeting. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item three, bills to be paid in the amount of $404,765.98.
Pay the bills. Seconding the bills.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments?
Madam Chair, today's bills include four occurrences where we paid $420 towards people's electric bills, which is of course the maximum. And since the last rate increase, we've had, we've certainly been getting a lot more of the maximum bills, and now we're faced with another rate increase.
Any other comments on the bills? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
There are no reports today. Item five is personnel actions. A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on routine actions. Are there any questions for human services, human resources? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item B is to recognize significant employee anniversaries for July 2014. Janetics.
Good morning, Commissioners, Janetics from Human Resources. We have five employees who are celebrating significant anniversaries this month. From the treasurer's office, we have Doug O'Nalens, who is a tax and licensed technician with five years of service. With 10 years of service, we have Deb O'Donnell, who is an administrative clerk in the Human Services Department, and Ryan Fallsough, who is a deputy sheriff here at the sheriff's office, and also Richard Schmidt, who is a civil service process server at the sheriff's office. And then with 30 years of service, we have Kim Morstedt, who is an administrative assistant at JDC. So we just wanted to take this opportunity to thank everybody for their service. I know Ryan is here, I believe, and I don't know if anyone else here... Oh, and Kim as well with 30 years, so.
So I'd like to thank our employees that are here for taking the time to stop in and say hi, and thank you for your long years of service. And we couldn't do it without our employees who are dedicated to what we do. So, thank you.
Item C is to recognize volunteers and county government for June 2014.
We had another big month of volunteers in June. There were over 230 volunteers that gave their time and service to a number of different departments, including the Sulan Heritage Museums, the Public Defender's Office, State's Attorney's Office, Emergency Management, and the jail. So again, a great opportunity for us to take a little bit of time to thank them for their service. We appreciate all their time and the fact that they do volunteer on their off-hours or on the weekends to all those different departments.
And again, we thank the volunteers because they're saving the taxpayers a lot of money in running this county, which we already have a pretty big bill. So, thank you, Jan.
The next item is application for abatement. Kyle Halsough.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kyle Halsough, Director of Equalization. We bring before you this morning two cleanup abatements. I guess that's the best words for them. The first one is for record ID 29189 in the amount of $1,121.42. This is for a property that was sold at tax deed. The second is for record ID 68415, a mobile home for 2012 property taxes in the amount of $341.29.
We have two abatements. Are there any questions for Kyle? If you're looking for a motion to...
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve both abatements today. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kyle.
There are no notices and requests today. The next item is a planning and zoning notice. Scott Anderson.
Thank you. Good morning, Scott Anderson from the county planning department. Today, I'm bringing forth a first reading and a request to authorize the auditor to publish a hearing notice to consider some amendments to our zoning ordinance, 1690. The ordinance amendments would amend Articles 3.04, 6.4, 7-04, 8.04, 9.04, and then our conditional use, which would allow for conditional uses, Article 1215, which would implement solar energy conversion system regulations, and then Article 2602, which would create a definition for solar energy conversion systems. This item was at the planning commission at the June 23rd meeting, and you may recall, this is very similar to the ordinance amendment that we have been working with, with the city of Sioux Falls in the joint area. So this would be an ordinance amendment which would reflect and somewhat mimic what we have recently adopted in the city, just to get out in front in case there is any interest to create or to construct solar energy conversion systems, which is basically for the public using solar panels or solar arrays to generate electricity. And that we have wording in our zoning ordinance that deals with wind energy. However, we did not have anything that dealt with solar energy, and that has become, the technology has moved forward, so it is feasible in our area, and we have some interest. So we're amending the ordinance to address the need. I'm asking to have the auditor publish the hearing notice for a hearing on July 22nd, 2014, in front of this board.
Any questions for Scott?
I need a motion to authorize, first reading and authorize auditor to publish notice for a July 22nd meeting.
Just made a motion.
A motion and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Scott.
Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. John Pecus.
Thank you, Cindy. The first is on DPNO number 31224 in the amount of $5,754.27. The auditor's office received a request to compromise a lien. The applicant is in the process of purchasing a home. During a title search, there was a county aid lien that came up in that amount of $5,754.27. It's primarily related to hospital expenses going all the way back to 1994. The applicant is currently employed downtown. She has an annual income of $20,593, according to her last tax return. She lists assets in the amount of $15,600, with liabilities of approximately the same amount, primarily consisting of a student loan. She's single. She has one grown daughter. She's seeking to purchase a home that would be close to her daughter. The applicant is seeking a compromise of lien on the payment of $2,800, which is 49%. She has stated that she's grateful for the county assistance, and that she was recently divorced. She had no health insurance at the time, and she had, of course, her daughter to care for, and now she has health insurance due to her employer. But at the time, she was very grateful for the county because they were able to come through with some health assistance. So I'm reluctant to make a motion because it's lower than the 50% that we have a precedent of taking. We don't have a policy decision on that. But I'm reluctant to make a motion for the $2,800. I will make a motion for $2,877.02. It's a little bit more, but it's that 50% threshold that we talk about. And also, yeah, and if someone will second it, I'll speak to it.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second for $2,877.02.
Yeah. Madam Chair.
Yes.
This hospital bill was incurred in 1994, 20 years ago. There's been no payments. So I mean, obviously, this is sitting out there. It was probably, once again, brought forward when there was a title search done, and this lien actually cropped up. Once again, it's important to remember that unfortunately, Minnion County is not a bank, and it's unfortunate that these liens are sitting out there. However, these are taxpayer dollars, and we are the wardens of the taxpayer dollars. So I know it's just a little bit more money, but it is consistent with our established precedent. So that's why I couldn't accept her offer of $2,800.
Are there any other questions or comments? Commissioner Benigut?
I had quite an extensive conversation with the applicant and her petitioner, and I will tell you that originally, in the conversation, she had a much lower amount, and it was because of, frankly, she went through details of her financial circumstances and where she had come from and where she is now, and to be honest, that was a stretch. And after that conversation, she did come back with some more support, and I recommended to her the $2,800 after the third conversation, if you will. So that's where that number came from. I didn't do the 50% math because frankly, at that point, I think I felt I was stretching the Cadillac as far as it would go. So I'm the one who suggested that to her because of, frankly, getting all the details of what the petition was all about. So I will support the additional $77, but I will tell you that we came a long ways to get to where we were at.
Commissioner Barth, did you have a comment?
I would just say that's, thank you for saying that, Gerald. I think that it's, no one wants to be hard about these things, but we have thousands of our citizens who come to us every year to get assistance, and we don't have the money to help them all. With the $49 million that we're owed by thousands of citizens from previous years, we just have to do whatever we can to recoup those funds so we can help more people in the future.
Are there any other comments? If the applicant is here, they may stay in their seat and speak to the issue if they want to, and if they don't want to, they don't have to say anything. So they do not see an applicant present, so I have a motion and a second on the table to approve the compromise of lien for $2,877.02. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next is DPNO number 33480 in the amount of $8,788.92. Once again, the auditor's office has received a request for a compromise of lien. The applicant currently received those services for, of course, human service assistance, public defender, public advocate, ranging from 1995 through this year, 2014. There is approximately $450 that is court order for payment of services for, I believe, a minor child that receives services that, of course, as the parent, they're responsible. There are partial payments that have been made to the account in the amount of $1,041.44, leaving that balance of $8,778.92. The applicant is seeking a compromise of lien without any further payment. The applicant is in the process of purchasing a home. The scheduled closing is July 8th. The home currently is in foreclosure proceeding, and it is actually the same home that she has been renting for the last 13 years. The applicant is hoping to purchase the home, and she actually has made first-time homebuyer qualification. Once again, she is hoping that she is able to purchase the home and clear up her debt, and, you know, obviously, she could then get off some housing assistance. The applicant currently is working in downtown Sioux Falls. She has annual income of $41,000, according to her last year tax return. She is a single parent. She has three children. All of them are teenagers. The applicant currently lists assets of $9,317 in a way of both her savings and checking account. She has three late-model vehicles, which is consistent with the fact that she has three teenagers. The list of $1,500 in her bank account that she is reserving primarily for the down payment of the home. She did get a tax refund in the amount of $4,958, which is her reserve fund to use for repairs, licensing, and bills and emergency needs. And she also has $77,759 in liabilities, primarily bank loans, bank notes, excuse me, medical bills, student loans, and of course, there's some AMI judgments out there. And then, of course, those have to be all cleared up before she's able to purchase the home. Once again, the applicant is requesting the lien be released without any further payment. And at this point, I'm reluctant to even make that motion with the pattern and practice and precedent that we've established here. So I'm not going to make a motion at this time.
Do you have any questions or comments?
I think the applicant is here, and she would like to speak.
Should we hear from the applicant first? I have a couple of comments. Do you want to hear from the applicant? If you want to speak, you don't have to stand up. You don't have to give your name. You can just say what you want to say. If you don't want to say anything, you don't have to say anything. Just talk loud, and you're fine.
I'm willing to pay the standard 50%. I don't know what to write down there.
Okay. All right.
I have a couple of comments, too. I wondered if we could, if she's willing to pay the 50%, if we could remove it, remove the remainder part from the lien on the house. She's been making consistent payments going forward already. She probably will continue to make payments on this. I think there's some other things that might be pending that, who knows whether it'll end up on her or someone else. But I'm just wondering if we can make, take a 50% payment and remove it from the house, and still they would let her, because otherwise, she's going to be homeless.
And if I may, the thing that's different about this compared to a typical transaction, I think, is that she is purchasing the house rather than selling it. A lot of these we have, well, we'll waive it as against the real estate. The issue with this is the ownership of the house is coming in, so I think it's difficult to say she's taking on an asset and we won't allow it to be attached to that asset, under operation of law, it is attached to that. So I would propose finding a different way to accommodate that if that's possible.
Typically, you know, our experience has been with title companies is that when they're going into these, at the time of the closing of the transaction, they want to be clean. They want it clean. They don't want an impediment there. That's one of the reasons they're doing the title insurance, et cetera. Now, if once that title has passed hands, and there are other things that come along down the pike that may attach, that's a whole different ballgame. And then those will attach, and that, but at the time of the closing, they typically want that to be clean, so.
Okay, I'm going to float a motion. I've got 50%, which is the amount of $4,389.48. That's 50%.
I have a motion for $4,389.48.
Forty-eight cents.
I was talking to that.
I have a second. I have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments on that? Commissioner Barth?
Well, I think that, on the one hand, it's extremely commendable to have been making routine payments for years. At the same time, it's also an issue where quite frequently over those years that we've had to do additional assistance, including this year in April and in, what is it, March. It's, it'd be nice if we could get by without having those additional liens or additional county assistance for different things. But again, making those regular payments really helps me on this, and the 50% also helps.
A motion and a second for 50%. Commissioner Kelly?
Well, the bulk of these, and I'm sorry, this thing isn't working very well, seem to be public advocate, public defender, and legal bills. The comment was made, the 50% is our standard. Not in my book. I don't think we have, we should have a policy.
A policy?
You know, perhaps if they come in with $26 million to settle all our clients, we probably would look at it pretty seriously, but...
I wish.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to, to support it. The applicant may well be getting into something that'll just create some more public, poor relief issues, and so I, and primarily because they are, they are attorney costs and not a cost, I mean, those are controllable by the party by not getting in trouble, or their children getting in trouble, whatever they're for.
I think the applicant would like to say something else.
The child who was in trouble is no longer a minor, so they will not be in there.
Okay. Any other comments? The child who was responsible for those public defenders is no longer a minor. They will no longer be put on her name. So they're not hers specifically. I am going to support this motion because if we don't support the motion, she's going to be homeless, and then we have additional expenses on top of this. So, any other comments? I have a motion and a second to approve the compromise of lien for $4,389.48. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. You can just meet with Robert or somebody, they'll tell you what you need to do, so.
The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is an opportunity where anybody in the audience who would like to speak to anything that is not on the agenda can come forward, identify yourself with name and address, and speak to your issue. And I don't think we have anyone here, so, all right, we can, oh, we do have one. Excuse me. Name and address, please, and state your issue.
Yes, my name is Michael Dupick. I'm 9258 West Nurmick Trail. I was just curious, I don't know if this body has anything, any business in relation to this, but with regards to nonpartisan redistricting of legislative districts, I don't know if that is a subject that this body addresses or not. Could you speak to that, Madam Chair?
We have no control over legislative, that's totally within the legislature.
Yeah, we have no control.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. Anyone else that would like to speak at public comment?
Madam Chair, I would just like to say, Michael, there is a, in the political club at Roosevelt High, and invited me to come and speak to them some time back.
Good.
And currently is, must be off on summer break.
Welcome. Welcome, welcome. If there's no more, we'll move on to regular business.
Item 10 is a public hearing to consider appeal of administrative decision granting drainage permit number 14-17 to Nicholas Grace to conduct agricultural drainage on property legally described as a southwest quarter, Subtrack 1, Swift Hall addition, Section 22 of Wellington Township. This was deferred from the June 24th meeting. David Heindl.
And before we start, Commissioner Kelly and myself both have to recuse ourselves, so I'll pass the gavel to Commissioner Pecus.
Thank you.
And we'll just step out until this issue is finished.
Yep.
They get a break and we don't.
No, it's not fair.
David Heindl, representing the planning department. We received a drainage permit application from Nicholas Grace, change permit 14-17. This was an application that was submitted, just to give you a location, it's about eight miles directly south of Humboldt along 457th Avenue. The application was submitted because work had been done right here. As you can see, this tile line right here was placed prior to the permit being issued, so a complaint was submitted by the downstream landowner who lives at this property right here. So the, the application was approved on April 11th because the permit, because it would outlet into Long Creek. As you can see here, downstream notification would not be required, so the applicant was required to pay $500, the penalty fee, for installing the work prior to the permit being issued. And the rest of the work, as you can see on the tile map right here, these are the tile lines that were installed. This is just an image of where that tile line that was already installed. As you can see, the area that's a little bit shaded, you can tell this was taken back in April, before the crops are in the ground. This is Long Creek right here on the downstream property owner's property. This is the potential location of where that tile outlet crossed the fence line onto the neighbor's property. And just to go into the rest of the project that was submitted along with the application, this is the tile line that would run straight towards the outlet, parallel with Long Creek, which is just on the other side of the fence line on the downstream property owner's property. This is a view down, looking where that, the existing tile line was laid prior to the permit being issued on April 11th. This is just another feeder line that would connect with the main line that would run into the outlet. And then this would be the proposed outlet. The applicant has obtained permission from Wellington Township to outlet into the township right away along 266th Street. And then this would be, this would continue to flow into Long Creek. As you can see, there's two pretty large culverts under 266th Street that would handle additional capacity for the extra water that would be running off from the agricultural So just to give you a little bit of background on, I met with the two property owners to discuss the proposed outlet location. Let me go back here. I met with the two property owners, Nick Grace and Jason Siemensma, who lives at the downstream, who's the downstream property owner, to discuss the proposed outlet location because on the original map, there was two outlets. One was up here where that tile line, as I showed before, that would outlet into Long Creek, and then there was one that would outlet down on the south side. At that time, the parties were in agreement that the tile would outlet in the culvert on 266th Street, which would continue to flow into Long Creek, which the applicant has obtained permission from Wellington Township for that. And on May 28th, staff met with Jason Siemensma to discuss the drainage application request and determine that a drainage board hearing is required because of the uncertainty regarding the location of the tile outlet and where that would be and what was done. I guess, well, was, the applicant originally, he removed that tile line and cut it off to the point where it would just be, it would be at this line right here and continue to flow into that outlet to the south. But the downstream property owner is still concerned that the location of the tile outlet and the potential effects of the project would have on their property would have a considerable effect. And then on June 11th, I met with the applicant and just looked the areas proposed for tiling and determined that they're being placed in areas that are traditionally wet and would allow the water to continually flow into Long Creek, which is a named stream, and so staff recommends that the drainage board approve drainage permit 14-17. So if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Heindl. Are there any questions for staff this morning?
Commissioner.
Go ahead.
David, on this next-to-last slide, where exactly is the tile coming out? Is it where that stake is? I don't, yeah, on that slide there, is the tile in existence on this slide, or is it just proposed to be in this area?
So the tile's not in existence. This is the stake that, I guess there were some property line adjustments done, and both the two property owners can speak on that one, but this pole right here is the, this is the original property line. I guess this was re-surveyed, and the pole was placed there. You can ask them about that.
So that's going to be in the...
But the outlet is not the stake, but it would outlet right into...
That's the township highway easement then, in that area, I'm sure. Okay, thanks.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Heindl this morning? All right, then we're going to turn it over to the proponents, which would be, of course, Mr. Grace, if you want to come forward and speak to your, obviously, request for the tiling. Could you please state your name and address for the record, please, sir?
Good morning. Nick Grace. I live at 26651 463rd Avenue, Hartford. And just proposing to lay this tile in along the creek right there, like David mentioned there, and I got permission from Wellington Township, I guess, to put it into the Long Creek there. I just want to tile the ground, improve the ground, and help stop erosion, I guess. It's just going to be a four-inch tile is what we're proposing to put in there. It's not going to be any thing like a 12-inch or nothing. It's going to be a four-inch tile, so, I know there's not going to be a lot of water, but it'd be enough to carry the water down the field there, I guess, to Long Creek, so...
A question from Commissioner Barth.
How many acres are you going to be draining, then?
Well, that's 140 acres there is what the whole piece is.
Right, but it's from the one area where the tiles are most dense, that's probably, what, five, 10 acres?
Yeah, at the most.
Any other questions for Mr. Grace? No? All right, thank you, Mr. Grace. Then I'll turn it over to the opponent... Then I'll turn it over to the opponents. Are there any opponents at which to speak against this drainage application? Could you come forward, please, sir, and state your name for the record?
Jason Siemensma.
And what's your address, sir?
45706-266th Street.
Thank you. Please proceed.
The only concern I have is when will it be completed? Because currently, the one he put in previous to acquiring the permit is still there and draining into the north end. And I guess that's my major concern, is when will it get done, so that this issue is over with?
All right. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, there's a question for Mr. Barth.
Just a question for you, then. It didn't look like much of a creek. Is it, does it run year-round?
No, and that's why I'd rather it did not go into the north end, so that I can get down there to spray and maintain on most of the dry years. Even with all the water we've had currently, it's pretty much non-flowing again already.
It's been a gully washer.
Yep.
So it's not, how much water's coming out of the, the tile on the upstream?
Mainly since it's currently just the one tile.
Not too bad.
And dug it down into the ground, you can't see, but during those heavy rains...
Sure.
...it did wash some.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Simonsen? No. All right, so I'll turn it back over to the commission.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask Mr. Grace another question.
Sure, Mr. Grace, can you please come forward to the podium again?
So understanding your neighbor's concern, what about completing that tile run down to the highway? Are we going to be able to get that done pretty quick, or?
Well, I'd like to do it after I get the, remove the crops off of there this fall, if that's good enough, I guess.
Okay. I guess I feel like I'm negotiating here.
Yeah.
I, I need to ask Mr. Siemensma if, if, if we can wait until this crop, this fall.
Right now, with it already having that done, that's why people should be aware and follow our channels. You don't have much choice, because you're asking for your drops.
And he has had to pay a fine.
Mm-hmm.
I would make a motion to approve the drainage permit.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, although some favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you. Look.
Things go smooth when Johnson's in charge.
Did you lose Commissioner Kelly? I don't want to wear Commissioner Kelly yet. I thought he was in here, so.
Did you check that park over there?
Yeah. All right.
Oh, no.
Yep, we'll wait until I get that out.
Better than the building at the park.
I thought he came in here because he seriously just walked out just ahead of me, so I must have gone down the hall, because he'll be back. Give me a minute to get my agenda. Give me a minute to get my agenda.
Item number 11 is a briefing from the Minniac County Emergency Management on status of county township road systems and other infrastructure due to flooding, high water and storm damage, and potential disaster declarations. Lynn DeYoung.
Commissioner Lynn DeYoung, Emergency Management. Commissioners, as you know, June has been a record month for precipitation within Minniac County, I think. According to the NWS, we've had over 13 inches of rain, which is the most rain ever in one month in our county. As a result, there's been several large flash flood events and other severe wind, events in and around the county, resulting in significant damage to county, township, and other infrastructure within the county. On the 16th of June, most of that damage came, and then on the 17th of June, as you remember, the sheriff, myself, and the highway superintendent just gave a quick update on the status of the county. Since then, we've been conducting a damage assessment with the townships, the cities, and then the county within Minniac County. So today, I've got a couple photographs of those events. Some of them, as you will see, there's township damage, and this is an example in Silverdip Township of drainage wash along the culvert. There's supposed to be a culvert there in the middle, but it's been barricaded off, and then some of the road, once again, damaged along the side of the road. This is a long ditch road up and in that township. Some washing of the bridge structures, culvert structures in there. This obviously is not a normal occurrence within the county of water over the road. Once again, this is out in Mapleton Township, and on your spreadsheet a little later, you'll see Mapleton Township has significant damage, but damage along the side of the road in Mapleton Township. Another photograph of Mapleton Township and some of the road washing along the side. Once again, Mapleton Township. This is out in Humboldt Township. If you're familiar with just east of Humboldt along the interstate, there's a large A-frame log home there. This is just to the west of this, and this is, you know, a regular roadway. Took out a six-foot-high, 60-foot-long culvert, and moved that culvert several hundred feet down the, down the, the cricket embankment and everything, so this would be some significant damage. This is the current bridge structure at the Garretson City Park up in Split Rock Creek. And if you'll notice, it used to be, you know, this dam used to have a walkway all the way over the top of it, and since the, with one or two minor pieces of the cap taken off, but since then, there's some more of that cap taken off, and it's actually basically draining the pond behind it. I was just up there today, and it's much different than what it even was a couple weeks ago when we were there for another event within that community. So, this is County Highway 109... 103, 138. 138 East, or in the Valley Springs area, and this is a agricultural degree runoff coming from that area. And I'll let Shannon and Jason come up and talk to you just a little bit about some of that. But this is some of that debris, a large amount of debris. They, they've hauled many truckloads of debris out of county right-of-way systems. This is some washing over the road. Jason, did you want to talk about this one or not? I'm not exactly sure on the location, but as you can see, the, there's a bridge, a bridge wing on the one side, and then the significant damage of riprap, or, excuse me, washing away of riprap, and then the shoulder of the road in that way. And there's several of those, so the exact location is unknown, but we can find that for you, but this is a representative sample of that. Once again, some of the damage, you can see, you know, obviously how high the water is or was as a result of debris on top of the bridge and some of those other areas. This is the bridge as indicates there, and once again, the highway shop can exactly talk to you, but most, that entire span should have riprap along there, and the supports have been undermined because the riprap's been taken away downstream, and then that has a potential to cause settling and those things that they don't want, and they can talk about some of the challenges that that presents to the system. An undermining of a culvert, once again, out there showing, you know, basically, there's so much water, it just flows all the way through, not only the culvert, but then undermines the culvert to, to get through that area. This is one of the county bridges, I forget, but shows, you know, just a representative photo, shows how high the water is at the time of the picture, but a lot of times, probably higher and overflowing the road. Once again, this is up in Edison Township, a large culvert that's been eroded away and then overtopped of the road and, and taken out, so some, some more damage, like, you know, if you're looking at the picture from the right to the left, you can see how the water basically is washing away all the shoulders in significant areas. Highland Township, we saw a lot of this type of, of damage in all the townships. Once again, in Highland, this is an area where basically the culvert had to come out so they can relay it and, and do the right thing to ensure proper drainage in future events. So as I indicated, the last couple, or the last week specifically, we've been working with the townships, the city, and the county to identify damage. We, what, basically what we do is, we ask them to go out and identify sites on a township map, so they'll identify a site, and then they number that site. They're supposed to take photographs and then estimate the amount of damage, and they, you know, do this on a regular basis within their regular budgets, or they hire a contractor to come in and help them with this. So these are the damage estimates that have come up. Some of them, there's only one township we've had difficulty getting a hold of, but the other ones that don't have a dollar amount within there have communicated to us that they don't have damage, or that it's not significant enough for them to ask for assistance. So as we walk down that line, you can see that there are some, you know, significant numbers in Highland, Humboldt, Logan, you know, all the townships that are reporting, Valley Springs specifically, and then Split Rock Township also have significant damages. Along with that, one of the largest numbers you'll see there is the $400,000 estimated damage, and that's as a result of the damage to the dam at Split Rock Park. The county highway system, this number, the number that they have is $274,000. That's going to be divided up between the, the county highway system has the federal aid road part of it, where they get specific dollars, and the highway department can talk to the specifics, but there's the federal aid side, and then there's the FEMA side. And early indications on the federal aid side, which is 100%, is that they would have approximately $115,000 eligible for the...I just want to check this. Excuse me. Anyways, it's divided, the 270, I just got to check that. So $71,000 for federal aid, and 115 for the FEMA qualifying events. The one thing I want to remind the commission is, is don't get stuck on exact numbers right now, because in all of these instances, they're still out there looking. The county has 200 bridges, and they haven't been able to get underneath all 200 bridges. But what we're asked at this point from, from the state of South Dakota and FEMA is just to take a quick snapshot, let's go out there and look, and see what we have for damages, and then as we go through the process, we'll see how those damages qualify for FEMA reimbursement and other reimbursements. So this number of 1.229 will be different at the end when we close this potential disaster out. So, in the next couple of weeks, basically, what will happen is, is as a result, Minniac County has approximately $1.2 million in damages. The amount that we need to qualify for a state disaster is 593,138, so we've met that threshold and exceeded it by approximately $639,000 with our snapshot of current damages. So we'll ask the commission later on in this briefing to declare disaster. There should be a disaster declaration included within your packet. We can't answer any questions with that. After that's done, we'll forward that on to the governor's office, and then they'll collect the disaster resolutions from not only Lincoln, or from Minniac County, but Lincoln County, Union County, Turner County, Clay County, and then Girald County, and then I think Butte County, to the six or seven counties that they'll bundle together and then forward that out to Washington, DC for a federal disaster declaration. After that is received from the feds, and, and either, if it's approved, then currently what we're doing is planning a initial damage assessment, is what it's called, with a team of local, state, and federal personnel. That would be on the week of July 14th, where we'd come in and we'd go to, basically, we would have a series of, of meetings with the potential applicants, so you'll see that everyone on the list would be invited to that meeting, and they'll have basically a kickoff meeting where they describe the program, and then another applicant's briefing, and then at some point also, during the week of the 14th, we would go out and survey the townships. So in the last week, those townships and the county has provided the data that says, these are the locations, these are the photos, this is what we cost, we'll go out there, and if your township has 20 sites, we would potentially take a look at 10% of those sites or 20% of those sites, and if their estimates add up to the FEMA estimates, then we would just write all of those projects together and say, your estimates and your projects are, are true to FEMA standards, and then they would just write the project for the entire township and not have to look at those. If those estimates are significantly different than what the FEMA estimates are to repair them, that instead of 20%, we might look at 40% or 70% and so on. It all depends on how those estimates come in and how they fit into some of the FEMA formulas. The other things that they would take a look at is areas of significant damage. For example, there'll be, probably because of the $400,000 price tag on the, the damage there, so there'll be a more in-depth look at that project specifically, and they might pull out specific projects also, so. So that would be done on July 14th, and then based on how all of that stuff comes back, then they'll start writing reimbursement and repair checks, or reimbursement for the townships and the county for some of the work that's already been done, and then allowing them to move forward with the rest of the work. So I do have the highway department, they can talk specifically about some of their damage if you choose now, and if you don't choose, that's fine also, but at the end of the briefing, like I said, we'll need a, there has been a resolution prepared, and we'll need that resolution voted on by the commission. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Barth?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Lynn, did we have any chemical spells caused by this flooding that of significance?
Not that we were made aware of.
Okay.
So, I mean, I'm sure there's, you know, it's hard to do any of that with the amount of rain we had and just a regular, you know...
During the permitting process, people often question CAFOs about their retention facilities for animal waste. Did we have any failures on any of those that we know of?
I'm looking for help in the planning, but I don't think we've been notified of any.
I'm guessing everything from the free-range catalyst currently near Omaha. What about when FEMA gives us money, we have six months to make the repairs, right?
There are, in the last several months, FEMA's done different things with eligibility on certain projects, and they've got about five or six different categories of work that needs to be done, and debris removal, and, and putting critical infrastructure back, and so on and so on. And based on, in the last couple of years, they've made some changes, so the last disaster you remember we had, that we qualified for, was the ice storm. We were only reimbursed 75% from FEMA, and then 10% from the state of South Dakota for the costs incurred on that. Since then, because FEMA realizes that it's bad public policy and, and bad for people to leave debris just sitting around, they've upped the percentages that are eligible to come back, depending on the timeframe that, that you get the work done. So they encourage you by giving you more dollars to do that work, to get it done and get it done quicker. We're yet to see that, and we're, we need to see how much of our work actually qualifies for debris removal, because we haven't dove deep enough into some of the townships to, to really look at that number. We're just looking at the, the overall snapshot of what the total is.
One final thing? So cornstalks appear to be a more recent development in these types of flooding things because of the fact that we leave the cornstalks out in the field. And that one picture of the highway was virtually covered, and I know, you know, it plugs culverts and all that kind of stuff, is, do you have any thoughts on that?
You know, I think that's a, you know, a development of how agriculture's developed, how, you know, the practices are there, and I think, you know, a larger conversation needs to happen because it does have the potential to, to make a lot of damage, and, you know, and an outsider looking in, you know, I think they know how to do their business and do it really well, it's just there are some, some things, and we do need to look at mitigation things for that, because there are truckloads and truckloads of that stuff, agricultural debris in the county right-of-way, and it has the potential to cause damage later on down the road, but today, it's probably not a significant, high enough item on the highway list to go out there and clean up today. And, you know, they can answer those questions specifically, but I'm pretty sure that in my discussions the last couple of days, we left the cornstalks there in the ditch because we got to get the roads and all those other things ready to go, but corn, or agricultural debris is significant and has the potential to cause significant problems, not just with our systems, but with a lot of the other systems, so.
Any more questions for Lynn? Any questions for Heidner Department?
Or any comments that they might have.
I don't see any. You're off the hook. You're off the hook. Okay.
Shannon Schultz, Assistant Highway Superintendent. In discussing with the DOT, their emergency, or operations are called the ER program, Emergency Relief Program, which is part of the STP funds and allocation, because we're a county highway, they, they have some designated routes that are federal aid eligible under the federal aid secondary allotment of funds. The governor has declared a declaration freeing up access to those funds. So the good news is, basically to return us to pre-existing conditions, it will either be through FEMA or through the ER program. They're very similar in execution and documentation and reimbursements. One good thing about the ER side is that we have a full six months to do emergency repairs. Should there be need for an engineered repair, that would be a two-year window of repair. I will add that our, our system, the pave system, fared pretty well compared to the townships. Mr. Barth, the question about the, the cornstalks? The water came so fast, it really did flush through. In a few cases where we had like 24-inch culverts, it did create a little bit of a blockage. The best thing about those cornstalks is it gives us a high watermark. We can see where those, you know, where the water came up, so, so, yeah, there's, there's a lot out there. I would also like to say, our crew did a good job staying ahead of things overnight and getting barricades out. That includes all of our bridge and highway supervisors, the administrative staff, Lynn staff, the sheriff's department, and, and I guess it was one of those South Dakota, let's get her done kind of feelings, and, and we heard some heroic horse and people rescued by the sheriff's department, so. I guess I am here to answer questions if you have any more about specifics, but the slides that he showed, you saw some bridge undermining in the center of that one picture? I don't know if I can get back there. Go back to that bridge bump, please.
Did we send any barricades down to Lincoln County?
No, we, we put the call out. They had called in the National Guard.
Yep.
And so we were said, thanks, but no thanks, they got a call.
Good, because I'd heard they had a lot of culverts, and I didn't hear a name on the list of people who donated culverts, and I thought, well, we had our own problems, I just wondered if anyone else had gone that way.
Right here is a column. This is a driven pile. If you want to think about it, it's the undergarment of the structure. It's not nice to see the undergarments, okay? So that's, that's a bad thing. As Lynn said, we want to have riprap. This is very indicative of our structures. A lot of the roadways, or the bridges, still have high water in them, so we can't make this kind of assessment on all the structures until the water recedes completely. Timing-wise, good news. Banner is our bridge inspectors this year. They'll be going out and doing a very thorough structural analysis. Our first pass has really been kind of emergency assessment, you know, what's wrong, what we need to do to fix it, and make sure that it's safe to operate on. Again, very indicative of, of a lot of problems on our system, right there in front of you, a loss of riprap, significant undermining. On a scale of one to 10, I'd say this is about a seven. We do have some 10s out there where the entire structure is, is standing on the piles, which it's not going anywhere. They're founded structurally on the piles, but nevertheless, we have to go, get, get back in there and fix them. The repair on something like this would be some mudjacking, and then put the riprap back, so. The other big common thing you'll see is scour at culverts. The water came up high, culverts, you know, velocity accelerates, and they make big scour holes, so we'll be doing a lot of ripwrapping. Okay, any questions?
Any other questions for highway? Thank you, Shannon.
Okay, commissioners, just as a reminder, if you do declare disaster, the community, or the townships and county will be eligible for 75% federal reimbursement, 15% local, and then the state adds in 10%. So I guess I-
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to authorize you to sign a disaster declaration for Minnehaw County. Second.
A motion and a second for the disaster declaration. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thanks Lynn for the report.
And like I said, there'll be some, a series of meetings over the next couple of weeks, and we'll make sure that the right people are in those meetings, and if you get any calls from townships or anything, and they have any questions, please, please let us know. You shouldn't, because we've reached out to all of them, but you still may, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 12 is consider a motion to approve change order number one in the amount of $8,705 to the contractor with Kone Elevators for the Public Safety Building Elevator Refurbish Project, Lloyd Olson.
Good morning, Commissioners, Lloyd Olson, Director of Facilities. Before you, for your consideration this morning, is a change order in the amount of $8,705, and it's related to the refurbishment of the Public Safety Building elevator. When the hydraulic cylinder was removed from the ground, part of the infill collapsed into the hole, and a well drilling company was hired to assess the situation, figure out what it was, and remove the product. That portion is complete, the project is about 80% done, and we're not expecting any further change orders at this time. So Sean Irvin from TSP and myself recommend the approval of this change order.
Make a motion to approve the change order. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions for Lloyd? Commissioner Kelly?
I'm just a little curious, it would seem to me when they're, they're pulling out a big cylinder, is that-
That's correct.
I would think in their bid, they, they know that a lot of the time it's going to probably collapse on them and require some drilling.
They did have a comment on their bid proposal, or their actual bid, that this was a possibility, about a 50% chance of it happening, so, and I think in fairness, they opted not to include that. It would have driven the price up by, I would say, probably about 20,000 more, because their original assessment was it was going to take like four to five days to remove it.
So this was specifically excluded on the bid?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you.
And the money's coming out of the building fund. Are there any other questions for Lloyd? I have a motion and a second to approve the change order. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks Lloyd.
Item 13 is to authorize the chairman to sign amendment number four to the institutional food service contract for the Minnehaw County Jail between Minnehaw County and CBM Managed Services. Ken McFarland?
Commissioners, as you know, you have a current contract with CBM to provide institutional food services for the inmates in the Minnehaw County Jail. We are in the last year of that particular contract. The original contract was for one year with four extensions, and so this is the fourth extension on that contract, and so we will need to go out for proposals for food service probably at the beginning of next year on this. This particular addendum seeks to increase the meal and snack lunch price from our current 84 cents per meal to 86 cents, with snacks going from 60 to 62 cents, and that change would be effective today and would go through June 30th of 2015. Just as a reminder, the 2014 budget for jail inmate meals is $565,000. This represents approximately a 2.5% increase in the CPAI index that they use for calculation of this particular product, and that's based on some Midwest factors relative to, specifically to the food service industry, and that, and that's how they arrive at, at 2.5. So if you have any questions, we're here to answer them for you, but again, this is a fairly routine amendment to this contract, and it will be the last one that we can engage in before an RFP.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to authorize you to sign this, and I do have a comment. Second.
Motion and a second with a comment for Commissioner Barth.
Just that CBM, a local company, has really, Minnehaw County helped launch them into this industry, and now they are in multiple states, and they've been a great partner for us, and, you know, if you want good food, don't go to jail, it's, don't plan on dining like a king. They've done a fine job for us, and I really appreciate them.
Any other comments, Commissioner Kelly?
It's just interesting to me that there's this 2.5% in CPI index, which is probably much more realistic than what the state allows us of 1.4.
Any other comments? I have a motion and a second to approve the contract for CBM and the jail. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item 14 is to authorize the chairman to sign amendment to the institutional food service contract for the Minnehaw County Juvenile Detention Center between Minnehaw County and CBM Managed Services. Ken McFarland?
Commissioners, this is the same contract that was bid. We are in, again, the fourth year of this particular agreement too for the JDC. As you'll see, this contract addendum is a little bit more intense than the last one. That's because of our participation in the school lunch program and the reimbursement that we get for that, and so there's been some minor contract adjustments relative to the school lunch program as well. And that, what this index, or, excuse me, what this addendum does is increase the per meal price from $1.98 per meal, and that to $2.07 per meal. It shows you what volume does for the price per meal, and that, and snacks go from 76 cents to 78 cents. And again, this is from January 1, 2014, through June 30th of 2015, and we'll have to bid this one out as well, beginning next year.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to authorize you to sign this with a comment. Second.
Motion and a second with a comment for Commissioner Barth.
Ditto my last comment.
Okay. Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve CBM for the Juvenile Detention Center food service. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item 15 is a briefing on proposals received in response to RFP for architect services for pre-designed work, development of site master plan, and preparation of preliminary cost estimates for various construction options for Minnehaw County Jail expansion needs. Ken McFarland?
Commissioners, we received six proposals on June 26th in response to our request for proposals for architectural services for pre-designed site master plan development and preliminary cost estimates for the various construction options we're looking at for the expansion needs of the county jail. This was a topic of discussion also at this morning's building committee meeting, as far as how we proceed with evaluating these particular RFPs, and it was the recommendation of the building committee that we bring to you, that the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee be the one that will take a look at these proposals, conduct the necessary vetting and interview processes in order to bring a recommendation back to the county commission. Also, part of that discussion was the, the need and the desire as part of the, you know, once we select an architect, to go through a jail utilization study snapshot, to see how, to take a look at those issues associated with that study, and to help roll that in as part of the master planning process. The six firms that submitted proposals for the benefit of the audience, they were all local firms that, that we've had the pleasure of doing business with in the past on a wide variety of county projects, and they have all partnered up with other firms that would specialize in, in jail needs. We received firms, or proposals from Perspective partnering with Leo Daily, RS Architects partnering with Venture Architects, TSP Incorporated partnering with Shive Hattery, Coke Hazard partnering with Trenor Architects, Architecture Incorporated partnering with CGL, Richie Green, and Henry Carlson Company partnering with BWBR Architectural Firm. So again, the recommendation is for the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee to go through the review and vetting process of these proposals, to bring us, and to bring a recommendation for selection to the commission. The RFPs do state that that process, you know, the desire was for that process to be completed, for a recommendation to come forward by July 15th. I'm not sure that that will be a realistic timeframe, given the demands of reviewing the proposals as they've been submitted and some of the detail, but that, if, that was the stated deadline, but I'm sure we'll hear more from the committee once we know what their schedules look like.
Do we want to get the recommendation?
Does the committee has a latitude to change that date?
I'm sure they will.
Thank you.
Do we need action on that, Madam Chair?
I would, you know, the RFP does say that this committee will be appointed, you know, by a committee appointed by the county commission, so if it's your desire to accept the recommendation of the building committee to have these proposals reviewed and vetted and a recommendation brought to you, and that be the Criminal Justice Advisory Group, then that's the motion that we would need.
In the utilization study?
Yeah, that was the motion that was made at the building committee meeting. So I'll just renew that motion.
Do you need a description of what that is, the, the building committee motion?
Yes.
Do, did we write it down?
Did we state that whole motion?
Did you write it down, Robert?
It was rather lengthy, if I remember.
It was rather lengthy.
The motion was.
Yes.
Yeah. If you didn't, we'll come up with it again. It's a motion to have the advisory committee review the proposals, to pick the top three, to come back, to give the commission a recommendation, and also to look for an outside agency to do a jail utilization study with some help from staff.
Including Bill Garnos.
Including Bill Garnos, that's right, as, what was his, was on that paper? Bill Garnos, as an independent consultant for jail-related planning activities.
That was it?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ken.
Item 16 is a briefing on chairman's appointment of Commissioner Jeff Barth to the Multicultural Center Board of Directors. Ken McFarland?
Commissioners, on June 17th, you were briefed on a request by the Multicultural Center to have a member of the county commission serve on the Multicultural Center Board of Directors. I know they're in the process of changing some of their bylaws in order to make that happen as well, and that after that particular meeting, and then after some discussions, Commissioner Heiburger is willing to appoint, and he is willing to serve, Commissioner Jeff Barth in that capacity through the end of this particular year, and that after, next year, then that appointment will be at the prerogative of the chair, just as many of the other layers on assignments are going forward from there.
Are there any questions on that? So Jeff will be just serving until January, then we'll be on a one-year rotation where I think the Multicultural Center has most of their appointments, and a three-year rotation, but just to keep in order with our liaison assignments, we will be doing one-year rotations. So is there a motion? Do we need a motion?
No, that's, that's your prerogative as chair to make the appointment, and we're just making that announcement because it was in fact a public item.
Okay, thank you.
Item 17, consider bid award for conducted electrical weapons for the Minnehaw County Sheriff's Department. Bids open June 26, 2014. James Hopman.
Jim Hopman with the Sheriff's Office. Just a little background on this. Remember this year, we put a group together to, to study if it would be behoove the Sheriff's Office to go to, yeah, conductive of elective weapons. After contacting several different agencies in South Dakota and around the nation, and also doing research, we found that it was, what would behoove us to go to that next level for defensive tactics and go to the electric control device. After working with Kirsten on the bid process, we did open the bid up, and that was on June 26th, and it was awarded to TASER. So a bid to go to TASER for $39,021.78. Any questions?
Any questions?
Move for approval?
I have a motion and a second to approve the bid award for the TASERS, and I'd like to say that you guys do not take this lightly. This is a very serious issue, and I know that you have looked into this seriously, and if they tell us they need them, they need them. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
The next item is Minnehaw County Commissioner liaison reports. The next item is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Are there any liaison reports? Seeing none, is there any new business? Ken.
Commissioners, I just want to remind you that today at 4 o'clock is the interim legislative committee who's taking a look at highway funding and highway construction needs around the state. Is meeting at 4 o'clock today over at Southeast Technical Institute in the Sullivan Building. And that in preparation for that, they've been briefed already in peer by the full committee of county needs around the state and that our highway department also participated in that particular survey. And you do have a copy of the information we've sent to you that was presented at that initial kickoff meeting to show what those county needs are across the state and what our particular responses were from our county to, to the committee as part of that survey. They also included for your information, some, some past history of where we get our funding currently for highway needs in our county. I know the committee is highly interested in hearing from county commissioners, highway superintendents, and our superintendent will be there. And that, and I encourage any of you who can attend to please come as well. I'll be there and I think there'll be a lot of reps from the chamber folks too that'll be at this particular meeting. So I know one of the things that they want to hear too is not only what are our needs, but if we have ideas or solutions to help meet those particular needs. So it's a fairly open forum from what I understand and how they're conducting that particular meeting. I think they're meeting down in Yankton this morning and one other place before they come, come up to Sioux Falls. So I encourage you to come if you can.
Commissioner Kelly?
I just want to reiterate what Ken said, that they, the peer staff recommended highly that we be there and we also say something. So I, I think there'd be a tendency of us to just lay, lay it all off to DJ, but I think to hear from us will make some impression on him too because this is what they're going to use to formulate any, any legislative action next year.
So who's going?
I'm going.
I think I'm going. It's on the calendar to go.
I might go. Don't know.
All right. Is there any other new business? Any old business? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn into executive section for contract negotiations.
And personnel.
And personnel.
That's my motion.
I have a motion, do we have a second?
Say it.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passed unanimously.